Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Bateman.
Here.
Mr. Goodyear.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Ori.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Here.
Mr. Ping.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. With us tonight, we have Director of Finance Mark Medler, Assistant City Manager Chris Weinage, Clerk of Council Misty Clark, City Manager Dave Kennedy, City Solicitor Joe Braun, Chief of Police Michael Gabrielson, Officer Sproul is hanging out in the corner. We also have former council members Todd Osborne and Pat Mays. I think that's everybody. So, welcome, everyone. It is Police Week, and I have a proclamation to read. Whereas, the Loveland Police Department stands watch over our citizens, selflessly risking their lives to protect individuals, families, neighborhoods, and property against crime. And whereas, it is important that all citizens recognize the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of local law enforcement agencies. And whereas, on October 1st, 1962, Congress authorized, and President Kennedy proclaimed, May 15th of each year as Peace Officers Memorial Day, honoring federal, state, and municipal officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty, and further designated the calendar week in which May 15th falls as Police Week, and directed flags be flown at half-staff on Peace Officer Memorial Day. And whereas, across the nation, Police Week is observed to honor law enforcement officers who have sacrificed their lives in the line of duty, and to honor those who risked their life to guard and protect us. And whereas, we salute the Loveland Police Department, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to the community for the past 77 years. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Bailey, by the power vested in me as Mayor of the City of Loveland, and on behalf of City Council and residents, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day; May 11th through 17th, 2025, as Loveland Police Week; and ask all citizens of Loveland and those with us today to join us as we honor the standing and the fallen. This is especially apropos in light of Deputy Larry Henderson, who was killed in the line of duty 11 days ago, which is just another stark reminder of the hazards and dangers that all of you face every day. And we are forever grateful for what you and all of our officers across the country did. So, thank you. All right, open forum. I'm not even gonna try to pronounce the name, and I'm gonna blame it on penmanship. Mark Kaye. Okay.
It's just a Mark last name.
My name is Mark K. Laskey, 220 Cannonade Drive. I know I've, first off, wanted to thank Dave for all his help with the recycling bins that have been added throughout the city over the past year or so. A few days ago, I stumbled upon a $15,000 grant through Hamilton County Resource that could help fund, and I talked to the lady, and she definitely was very interested in it, the person that was in charge. And Dave, if you're interested, I can send the information over to you. And that's about it, because I know $15,000 would really probably help finish it downtown, about the one-for-one with a recycling and a trash can right next to it.
Yeah, you're right.
Cool.
Thanks.
Mark?
Thank you.
Okay, next is review and approval of the minutes from the April 22nd, 2025 meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
Make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart. Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Weinage.
Thank you, Mayor. First two resolutions in front of you today are both project agreements, kind of formalities with ODOT. The first project that we'll talk about is one that we've talked about before, State Route 48 and Butterworth sidewalks. As you know, you previously authorized the city manager to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering. They're currently doing the design for that. When you get into the first part of design, usually it's actually a little before this, ODOT basically sends out the agreement packet, and that's essentially what's in front of you today, which outlines the funding, funding sources, calling out what ODOT and what OKI will be supporting us with, as well as what the local match will be, which we've gone over that a couple times, and we've talked about, you know, we're gonna be identifying areas that we can, we can fund this once we get to construction, which will be 2028. But at the end of the day, the total, total project cost is around 4.6 million, or almost 4.7. Our local match, which includes the engineering portion, will be around 2.2, a little under 2.2. And we're seeing approximately 2.5 million from ODOT and OKI funding. We've, we've addressed this before, but again, these are, these first two are kind of formalities that need to get taken care of with ODOT. So, if you have any questions, I'll take those.
Any questions? All right, read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an LPA ODOT let project agreement for the installation of sidewalks along State Route 48 and Butterworth Road.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Resolution 42 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Weinage.
The next resolution is also a project agreement with ODOT. This one, actually, when they were going through an internal audit, they realized we didn't, they never sent us over this agreement. So, this is kind of late in the game, because we just submitted stage three plans for, for the project. In fact, we just had a, kind of a project meeting the other day on it to kind of discuss schedule. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about where we're at with that, with this project. But if you recall, probably a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, submitted funding requests to the tune of about $1.6 million for this project. Once again, this is the project where it goes from Castle Skate Land to approximately the Public Works Building, Public Works Department. This was a, at the beginning, when it was scoped, the project included sidewalks. They knew that, we knew we were gonna need retaining wall for the portion near, near Oasis. And at the time, we were looking at potentially putting in a mid-block crossing near the Kroger there. Through the process of looking at cost-benefit analysis of that mid-block crossing and what that truly gained, based on where High Ridge is located and the crossing there, as well as the safety concerns with any mid-block crossing, the project was, we, we basically took that out of the project. And that was a lot, that was due to, like I said, the cost-benefit analysis. It was costly. And as you see in your packet, I've kind of outlined where these costs have gone from stage one through stage three. At, at stage one, we were a little concerned. We were coming in at like $2.4 million total for the project, which was about almost $500,000 over what we had estimated when we went for the funding request. Now, at stage three, we're about, we're a little under 2.2 million for the total project, which includes design, construction. So, we've, we've just submitted those stage, stage three drawings. We're pretty much at the finish line for design. Now, we're kind of in this, unfortunately, holding pattern with utilities. So, part of this project, well, actually, all of this project that has sidewalks involved, we have to get all those poles moved back. The good thing is they're in the right-of-way, which means they have to move at their cost. But we're at their mercy, kind of, in a sense, with their schedule. And we just got word this, this week, Monday, that they're, they're almost a seven-month construction process. So, we had hoped this would be a 2026 project. We're still holding out hope that we'll, we'll be under construction, but it's looking like closer to a 2027 project due to the utilities having to be relocated. We're working with them. We're pushing hard on ODOT, on the, on Duke. But that's kind of where we're, where we're at today. So, I just wanted to kind of give you an update on the project itself. If you have any other questions, I'll take those.
Any questions? Mr. Ori.
Those are overhead lines right now? Are they considering underground, or?
So, when you, in phase, so, in this, this phase of the project, no, we are not considering it for two rea-, well, main reason is cost. When you tell them, they will move at their cost when they're in the right-of-way, and they will keep them overhead. When you ask them to go underground, you pay. And it's extremely expensive, and we're seeing in phase one, which we're in about, in phase one, which is the roundabout portion, we're in what's called stage one. The utility costs, we're putting all those underground, because that's kind of more the heart of the, of the Loveland-Madera corridor, because it goes all the way to West Loveland. We're seeing those costs are very expensive. So, we're working on that. We've, we've identified, one thing, Mr. Ori, that we, we did identify or did bring to their attention is, all right, you're not gonna charge us for going underground 100%. What's the difference between going overhead, moving overhead, and going underground? And I'll be honest with you, it's been a battle, because they've, they've sent back, they've sent back numbers that, quite frankly, I've called them on, because I think, I don't think it's appropriate, what they've said, as far as what the difference is. It's very minimal, which I don't believe for a second. So, we're working through that, but to answer your questions, it's the cost.
But, but you're still looking at, at doing that, or?
In phase one, in phase one, yes, which will be from, from Valley View, a little farther than Valley View to West Loveland. That, that's still the plan, is to go underground. We did allocate, we did budget for that, for the utility portion on that. But it is a little, a little more than we had anticipated, so we're looking at some good, you know, engineering analysis and some things that we can potentially, you know, work, work out different ways to save some money.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Just in, in view of our audience, as well as the general public, we're talking about millions of dollars for sidewalks. What, what are the cost drivers on it? It's more than just digging a trench and pouring concrete in. You have to move utilities, and explain some of the other things.
Yeah, so, so as part of these projects, you've got utilities like, like the Dukes of the World. Now, in this phase, obviously, we're not paying for them to move, but we've got, this phase three has approximately 600 linear feet of retaining wall, and it's substantial retaining wall. That's in the neighborhood of 400, 400 to 500,000, just for the retaining wall. So, you have other aspects. The great, the grades are not easy. In some of the phases, you've got water lines that need to be relocated. One of the big, big things is when you are taking right-of-way, which is what we're doing in some of these locations. So, it's a fair market appraisal, which is very fair a lot of times. So, that's a cost, a cost to it. It's a, it's, it's a combination of a lot of things, and quite frankly, it's construction costs in general right now are, so that's why, even, even when we put in for the funding, you know, we put in a 20% contingency at that point. By stage three, which is partly why you see numbers come down, you should be down to about a 5% contingency. You should be tying in those numbers pretty well, but what we're seeing is, even the 20% contingency for a two-year project, two years out, sometimes isn't enough right now. So, that's what we're seeing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, wanna read the resolution?
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an LPA ODOT let project agreement for the installation of sidewalks along a portion of Loveland-Madera Road.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Resolution 43 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Weinage.
As part of our next phase of our Nesbit Park master plan, we've, we've identified and brought to council several times for, for different grant opportunities, the, what we're calling the loop, loop-walking trail, phase one, which essentially goes from Carl Brown entrance, loops around the perimeter to the, to the shelter behind the, behind the current playset, play area. One of the components of that was installing what we call adult swings. I reference all the time to kind of Smale Park. The swings, the styles they have down at Smale Park, they're very, very high-quality, very, very nice swings, swings that I think we've seen, or we've, we've went down there, we've looked at them. They're holding up really well, even in, you know, even in downtown Cincinnati, they're holding up pretty well. So, we went, we came to, we came to council March 10th to submit for another grant, because we, we identified the swings we wanted, we, we felt were the best, best option for the city and its residents. But we knew we were short by about $20,000 on kind of our budgeting of where we wanted to be. So, we came to council, submitted a Claremont County Parks grant, and we were awarded in the middle of April, late April, that $20,000. So, that got us, as you see, kind of our, my swing funding chart there, with a $10,000 donation from Little Miami River Chamber Alliance, the previous ODNR Nature Works grant of 21, 110, and the new Claremont County Parks Community Grant of 20,000. It got us to our local match that we were, we were striving for, which is $5,000. So, basically, the swings we show you, they're approximately 24-foot wide. It's a set of two. They're three-seater swings, so they're a little wider. They're not, we, we went back and forth, even as recent as a couple weeks ago, just looking at costs and looking at some things. They do have a two, two-seater option. This three-seater, looking at where, kind of where it's located near the playset, I think there's more opportunity for families to enjoy something that's a little, little bigger, a little wider. So, we've, we've identified, obviously, with Superior Steel, he, that's a contractor that we've been working with. He's worked hard for us, bringing this cost into where we needed it to be. It started at, for, for kind of some history, it started out around $73,000. We worked with him on a couple things that were not necessarily, not necessary in his opinion, but something that they did down at City of Cincinnati. So, we were able to, able to bring that down. This company is a, kind of a full-service specialty structural steel company. They do a wide range of things. They did a lot of the stuff down at Smale Park. They've done conserves, conservatories. They, they do really stuff that you need to design, kind of special, unique things, they do it. They do the engineering, they do the design, they do the manufacturing. So, this cost is manufactured, designed, manufactured, installed for 56, 110. We feel it's gonna be a very nice addition to the, to the trail. In fact, we were walking out there today with KZF, looking at some things, because I'm, they are actually designing the foundation for this, just to make sure we've got it, you know, a good foundation for this, these swings, because these are some heavy-duty swings. These aren't something you can buy at Lowe's sort of thing. So, it's gonna look really good. There's, there's a natural clearing, where we did the Harrison Sewer Improvement Project several years ago. So, it'll look really cool. I think it's, it's gonna be a great enhancement to the, to the park.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Bateman.
Just appreciate some of the context you gave around the vendor relationship. I think it's cool that we've got a local contact, and we're working with, you know, you know, the architecture master plan design firm to coordinate with a vendor for something custom. So, I'm hoping this turns out to be really cool and can help with future projects of similar nature. So, thanks for that.
Any other comment, question? Vice Mayor.
Just looking at the, the drawing, and then what's on page 12E, or page 55 of the packet, sorry. The thing's on top. Is that to render some shade?
It is. It's, it's an aesthetic slash shade sort of thing. It is, in a sense, it's open, so it is slatted, so it's not gonna be complete shade. It's a combination of aesthetics and shade.
Any other questions, comments? Read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Superior Steel Services LLC for Nesbit Park Swings.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
I'm going to abstain. My firm does work with Superior Steel.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Resolution 44 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Kennedy.
So, for you tonight is the resolution to award the bid for the final phase of Loveland-Miami-Ville Road Sidewalk Three-Phase Project that we began in '22, '23, '24, and '25. This project, which was the city council's first initiative after the comprehensive plan, sort of did a call for connectivity amongst our neighbors, amongst the residential neighborhoods, and also people's desire to get into the downtown district. With this final phase, which is the longest of the three phases, includes partial water main, the city will have put in 2,240 linear feet of sidewalk along Loveland-Miami-Ville Road. And again, back to what Vice Mayor Phelps said, again, we're not just putting in sidewalks, we're replacing water mains, we're putting in curbs and gutters, we're putting in a whole stormwater system. So, with that, and, and I think council does a really good job of piecing, taking, taking items on one at a time, things that they've done, and all the playsets, so on and so forth. So, with that, and this project will connect 140 homes into the downtown district, to the schools, to the churches, and soon, someday soon, Claremont County Park, if we take the next step. So, the low bidder for the project was Majors Enterprises. They actually did the phase two and did a heck of a job. They, their low bid was $496, 812. Engineer's estimate for this project was $602, 350. We, our CIP was $625, 170. So, in terms of the CIP, we came in at $128, 538, under what we budgeted, and we will award the bid. These, I will say, get the opportunity to speak a lot of residents. These sidewalks have been very popular. Actually, based on their requests, we recently just added some streetlights. Well, we had Duke add some streetlights along Loveland-Miami-Ville Road, takes you down towards St. Columban. We'll be doing that same thing in phase three. This one, if you looked at the drawings, at the photos in there, this one has a unique sort of cool aspect into it at the end, as you approach Huntington, because the right-of-way is so wide, it actually jettisons behind two relatively mature trees, to tie this in. It goes from your typical roadside sidewalk to a real park feel when you enter in that. Otherwise, that is the end of this. Moving forward, we're hoping to hear about some OKI funding to, to begin through the safe route to school. And Chris and I, when we sit down and plan 26 budget, we'll be working at, looking at the Claremont County sidewalk plan we brought forth.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Read the resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Majors Enterprises, Inc. for completion of the Loveland-Miami-Ville Road Sidewalk Phase Three Project.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ori.
Yes.
Resolution 45 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Kennedy.
So, this sort of brings the whole, for lack of better words, Denisi Mirror Factory project to a close. Actually, I was thinking the other day, but the mayor drove by one day and said, "Why is the city not trying to come up with some money to buy that old building?" If you recall, the, the Denisi Mirror Factory building, which has now been vacant, goodness gracious, six-something years for now, the city was able to secure grant funding to purchase that property. That actually, that grant application, when we acquired the property, the funding the city received to acquire the property actually had additional funding for the demo, but the, it, they only funded the acquisition. The, since then, the city actually recently submitted two separate grant applications to two separate agencies, because the condition of the building has got to a point where it is, needs to be demolished, and it is in bad shape. The roof is actually sagging. And similar to a recent raising project we brought last meeting, it is also being accessed. It's, it's being, people are getting into the building, for lack of better words. So, we did our due diligence with Patriot Engineer, and when we were prior to buying the property, the city actually, we used Patriot Engineer, and they actually drilled through the floor to get soil samples from underneath the building, so we knew what we were getting when we purchased the property. So, there is remediation that needs to be involved. Back in August, we received the bids. We needed those for the grant application. Citywide was the low bidder on the project at $149, 950. We have applied for and were recommended for approval with Hamilton County Commissioners of $193, 455. I called them, and they said they recommended we go ahead and proceed with this, to get all this moving. And then, we will do soil remediation and oversight with Patriot, and not to exceed. Due to the single-subject provision required by the higher vice, with that, then we have to have two separate, two separate resolutions in front of you. Worst-case scenario, because Patriots is based upon the amount of soil we find, you know, you drilled, you don't know what you're gonna get. But when it's all said and done, the property will be completely removed, the structure will be razed, the soil will, what, soil will all be remediated, and we've already have an active realtor on this project. We, quite frankly, just didn't want to market it until the structure was gone. It made no sense for the city to go through the process of having calls on something that is not repairable. So, with that, that is the two separate legislations in front of you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
About plenty.
Any other comments or questions? Right, and read their first resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Citywide Waste Remover for raising the structure located at 507 Loveland-Madera Road.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Resolution 46 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
Read the next resolution.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Patriot Engineering for soil remediation associated with removal of the structure at 507 Loveland-Madera Road.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Goodyear.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Resolution 47 is adopted by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, do we, I don't see the resolution. Is there a resolution in here?
Yeah.
For magistrate Gasts? Where, where is that on agreement?
Where? I see that. There's a blank page.
Nope.
Yeah, it's not there.
Uh, just.
You're missing that.
Nope, it's still there.
You should have it. Does the clerk have it? I printed it out.
I have a copy in the packet that I gave you just now. Make copies. You can make copies from that folder.
Okay. So, she can read it, too.
Yep.
You want us to explain it while she's copying?
That'd be fine.
Go, yeah, whichever one wants to talk about.
The next piece of legislation relates to the fact that, as you're aware, we have a mayor's court here in the City of Loveland. We retain an attorney to serve as magistrate for our mayor's court. For the past 12 years, Carla Birch, who's a retired Hamilton County magistrate, has served as our magistrate in mayor's court, and she is retiring. And as a result, the mayor has authorized and recommended David Gasts to fill that position under the same terms that we've had Carla doing that. He, just so you know a little bit about him, he is the head of the Claremont County Criminal Division in the municipal court in Claremont County, and we think that his experience will be invaluable, given that in municipal court, as you know, they hear traffic and criminal cases. That's what we hear as well in our mayor's court. So, he's qualified. He also currently serves as a magistrate for. He also currently serves as a magistrate for four other mayor's courts in the area, and, um, is excited about the opportunity. I also know that the clerk has already been in touch with him, um, about, um, the fact that effective January first, there was a lot of changes that the legislature passed to, um, mayor's courts and how they operate specifically related to citations, um, how we issue warrants for fairs to appear and things like that. He was on top of all of that, understood it, and, um, we think that he'll be a good addition to the mayor's court. So we're required to enter into an agreement with him, and that's what, um, is before you today. It's, it's a at-will agreement, um, that will be presented to you.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, Mr. Hart.
Mr. Bronck, can you, can you kind of talk about the scope of mayor's?
Yeah, so one of the unique things about Ohio is that we have mayor's courts, and, um, it allows for us to hear traffic and criminal cases locally versus taking them to one of the three counties we're located in. A lot of people don't realize the fact that the city of Loveland is actually located in three counties. We're in Hamilton, Claremont, and Warren. So if we did not have a mayor's court, we would end up sending our officers to either Lebanon, Batavia, or downtown Cincinnati for every single violation that occurs. This allows them all to be heard in one mayor's court with jurisdiction here locally, and we also hear income tax violation cases and property maintenance cases that are cited into, um, into court, which are heard there. So he would also be hearing those cases.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
So everybody had an opportunity to read the resolution? Any further questions?
So, so this starts June first and goes, uh, until he either resigns or.
Or we replace. That's correct. And the mayor would just, she makes the appointment to you, and then you have to bless it by adopting a contract. And, um, and that is the date she gave us, June first. We've had about sixty days' notice, I think, the chief and I were made aware, so that's when she officially gave us notice.
Any other questions?
He said he's got experience as a lawyer, but has he ever done, um? He's done mayor's courts.
Yes, he's currently the magistrate in four other mayor's courts.
You may have mentioned that.
That's okay. He's done it for a long time, and prior to being in the Claremont County Prosecutor's Office, he was in private practice and also did.
Any other questions? Yes.
I, I just have a comment. I, I know Magistrate Birch, who's retiring, and I just want to say, she's a fine lady. I really like her and, uh, appreciate her service.
All right, want to read the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with David M. Gass to serve as the magistrate for the city of Loveland's mayor's court.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Resolution forty-eight is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Kennedy.
Uh, we have been working with a resident that lives on, uh, Walker Street, and we are looking to grant him an easement along a paper street that runs between Walker and Wakefield, which will help provide access to a, uh, rear, to the rear of his property where he'll be constructing a garage. Um, this is the best path forward for the, for the resident. He does own property behind also that fronts Wakefield, but by utilizing that, we're giving up a building site, and, um, this would be a good, it, it, actually, this was part of the Forest Park subdivision back in the early nineteen hundreds. It is, has no utilities. It is, the property owner currently maintains it. We would simply be giving him, uh, access, uh, under the understanding that the city would reserve the right for any future use, though as unlikely as that is. I think it's a, it's a win-win for the city, and, um, if council is, would like to proceed, we, we only go so far until council sets a public hearing, which I would recommend for, to be June tenth.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Ori.
Mr. Kennedy, it looks like, is this house, uh, it's outlined here in the green, and then the property line is the orange. Is this house built on, in the easement area already?
No. No.
No?
He, his, his house is built up against, he's got to lean to, to the right, off to the side, don't, yeah, the, with the, um, aerial photos on the camera, Claremont County moves over. The area, if you look at packet page, um, eighty-seven, that's the best depiction. And as I said, he owns property along the back, too.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we need a.
I'll set a motion, uh, or, uh, I'll motion to set a public hearing for June tenth, twenty twenty-five, to review the granting of an easement of city-owned property to the owner of five nineteen Walker Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, under city council reports, I think we will not meet again before Memorial Day, correct? So we will have the Memorial Day.
On the twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth, the, uh, the parade and the, um, ceremony. Parade starts at nine AM at the primary elementary school. Um, and I believe we have a flyover scheduled again, correct?
We are, we are approved, waiting for planes assigned to us.
Okay. So we would encourage anyone that is, uh, able and available that day to come on out, either as part of the parade route and/or down at the Veterans Memorial. Usually we get down there by, I think the ceremony usually starts about nine-thirty-ish, something like that.
Nine-forty, nine-thirty.
So hope to see you then. Any other announcements? Anyone else have any announcements?
The food truck was a hit again this year.
Was it?
Very well attended.
Beautiful day for it. Very good. All right, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move, uh, that we go into executive session under Ohio Revised Code, Section one twenty-two, G two, to prepare the sale or lease of property.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Ori.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps.
Yes.
Mr. Ping.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Bateman.
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Motion carries seven to zero.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Some have motioned.
Second, please. Anyone, second. Anyone, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ori?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Goodyear?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.